Everyone in this courtroom?
Yeah.
(inaudible)
A late start, talking to our legal counsel about a few things, so I apologize for the late start. But this is the Yancey County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting for February the 10th, 2025, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I have asked Commissioner Lefter if he would lead us in our invocation. Following that, we will ask Commissioner Green if she would to lead us in our pledge. Mark, go ahead.
That's correct. Dear Lord, we just thank you over this day, thank you for watching over us, keeping us safe, dear Lord. Thank you for all the blessings that you've given us and what I feel about. We just ask God that you would help us more as we can lean on the business of Yancey County more to make decisions more that are for the good of this county, dear Lord. Just help us to know what we need to do, dear Lord, and just carry that out into the best fervor that we should look for in carrying our shoes. If you just ask these things, you will.
It's our family.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look over the agenda, but I would like to see if we, someone would make a motion that we amend the agenda to add a line for our Yancey County School for the acquisition of real property. Have a speaker for that.
Motion.
Have a motion, do I hear a second? Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And have approval of the agenda. All right, next on the agenda would be the consent agenda, and we have a few items on here. One is the, the first one is the approval of the January 13th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Next is the approval of the 2526 budget calendar. I hope everybody's had a chance to look over that. And then the approval of tax release adjustments for 2025. And then the annual settlement report for unpaid real and personal property taxes for 2425 for informational purposes. And then finally, the January 2025 tax collection reports as always, as for informational purposes. Any discussion about the consent agenda? All right, here you go. You're going to have a motion.
I'm not.
Have a motion, do I hear a second? And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There you go, opposed, motion carries, thank you for that. Next, speaking of our tax departments, some different things going on with that. We have Mr. Danny McIntosh, going to, our current tax administrator, he's going to give us some tax refund release late applications. So Danny, thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, the Commissioner, the Chair, Finance Officer, Scott. Wow. I'm very sorry, I just want to clarify off the table.
Scott is the glue.
Scott is. We like Scott, Scott, thank you, Chairman. I've got, had a couple of releases that y'all looked at in your consent agenda from the Board of Leadership and you. They only have one refund to take a look at tonight, and that, you had an opportunity to look over that, I hope, I asked a question about that one, if you've got it, simply that the wrong building was considered as a house by the contractor, and I couldn't understand that, and there's no review of their review of refund. Last month, I presented to you subjects of a couple of resolutions, and I hope you have an opportunity to look over those. And one of those was a resolution to adopt modernization of land records, and the other was a resolution to establish tax regulations scheduled for 2025 and going forward. The academic questions, I mean, of those.
And that was the item that we tabled last month, since there were, two ladies were not here, so.
And I, I'd speak up and say that Morgan has worked on that, and currently working on zoning on that, and that's where we're actually, we have not forgotten that it's working towards different regulations or some decisions concerning you guys, just a little bit more thorough discussion on that before we do get to have it quiet, nailed down the way it needed to be, so we'll probably go back over that.
All right. That's what we'll do next month.
We can present that next month, yeah.
That way everybody has some clarity, everybody will understand exactly what it is going forward. In my opinion, I think it's something that definitely viable and we need to do, but but we'll, we'll go over that and make sure that all takes across and.
All right. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Danny, appreciate it. All right, next is item number six, Panacolumbus with Thrive, here she is, Appalachian Youth Program, thank you, ma'am, for coming. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much for having us. My name is Panacolumbus, and I'm the Executive Director of Thrive Appalachia.
You brought some folks with you.
Hi, brought some folks with me. First, I'd like to introduce you to Lori Maynard, she is our amazing program director.
Hi Lori.
That's excellent. And then I'd also like to introduce you to our teen leadership team. And I'll be telling you all about Thrive Appalachia.
Awesome.
Now, one of our girls got the flu today, so her brave and valiant little sister, Eileen, has stepped in, so.
Well, thank you all for coming.
Thanks for, thanks for hearing us. Go ahead, take it away, kids.
Hi, I'm Holly.
I'm Olga.
I'm Alanya, and we'd be here to help you guys about Thrive Appalachia. I didn't know. We like Thrive, we can go to our friend's office, they can find us and we can sell bakedings and stuff in the inner atmosphere.
Did you bring any samples?
We'll be serving you ice cream, their homemade ice cream after our presentation.
I'm Thrive Appalachia, we get what we want to learn, in a fine, tangible way, we learn by doing. And we're a great, we're a great student, we make three things that often we're not paying for, and this year, we chose 25 classes, including 12, one making, maybe obviously music, for stack writing, coding, decorating, creative writing, networking, gymnastics, drop farming, and. And all the time, through our high school, we do it in the classroom, and therefore, we can now open the time to us, almost all of the students, and then to tell our students how to do this together. By making these classes, we learn how to write and what we love to do, which is also how we design our future arts and behaviors. And I know why, because everything works, because there's a lot of things that we can try to do, and there's a lot of things we may be not have achieved, but we got some things that we definitely do, that we're more than ready for. We also do it, and we do it well, and also we do it, and it's a good thing that we do it. Next, we have this Thrive Outhand International Credit. This inspires people to start their own table restaurant. Once a month, as a dual community, we manage to be cooked, served, ordered, manage money, calculate sales tax, and live in the reactive, clean, and everything. This campaign has been over seventy-five customers and made over $1,000. In the form of coffee, which we have, and grapes, and gelatos, fun and cookies, and our favorite drinks, which is made in strawberry. Our business ventures have also led us to making ice creams with those who are clean beer, for instance, and chose ten flavors, including vanilla, chocolate brown, honey lavender, mango, matcha, cocoa, salted caramel, and strawberry. We make thirty gallons of ice cream in preparation for our newest ice cream company, who's great opening this fourth year. We have now made a total of over three hundred gallons of ice cream. Now, Appalachia, all that is a city, which is a mountain of energy. And we give them a good in-class, fifteen hours on it, so how much do I have to offer? That's why I'm a business guy, to maintain my confidence in this, we started on sale on, but it sounds a lot like we already signed a contract, we made ourselves a living award. Another girl named Ava, she does three week pottery class, and then we mainly chat culture with artists and pottery teachers, working through the works, with Ava on the internet. That's been three weeks at a local pottery studio, and had made nearly $1,000 dollars selling the work and helping run the cat after. It's started, because three week sewing class will be discovered who loves the stuff. Because sewing classes for a year, the kids made twenty-five upscale women's wool jackets that are both for people and our household. We held a fashion show September at Orangeville Town Center, where teens collectively made eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars selling their down home.
Great.
It's worth it, it's worth it. These are the little things that we want, they are made on the street. We'd like to see people make our own things, and we're hoping to build our own little communities, maybe a little bit of a day.
All right, Thrive Appalachia team, we're involved with every aspect of the design and renovation of buildings. We imagine a large commercial building, a sewing slash fashion studio, an Appalachian theme, music room. I call you a good job, the Blacksmith's Board and here. We believe this will be a real house that needs to floor and cover everything that's happening now. If you notice any buildings that are available, please look for them. Thank you so much for having us tonight, we have a hand in the下手.
Wow. I'm sure you're reading words, I'm extremely good at this. Three hundred gallons of ice cream, just that one was impressive. But, but the amount of money that y'all have raised is also, that's a standard. And y'all have, y'all should be very, very proud. Yeah. How many kids are in your, in your program?
Around one hundred forty.
Really? How many?
Twenty forty.
Wow, and that's all across the county, because here at the school, it's not over.
We have kids from five counties traveling, because we have families who are trying to move to Yancey County.
That's right.
Right. Jeffrey Mitchell, Nancy Madison, and Bob Moore. Our largest number of kids is Yancey County. What's that? What did I do, what was that mail? The reconciliation town, we'll be using the First Baptist Church this year, and then a different Arthur Morgan School that's used there, their wood shop, and their Blacksmithing Board. We combo this together, all over the county.
Y'all, this is great.
Is it good?
I'm not asking for y'all, I'm so sorry. I am so sorry, not really, not really. Very good.
I expect you to add the ice cream while we're on to your new building.
Yeah. So, I'm making the ice cream, let me just destroy this, I'm trying to. You do it machines, or is it hand churned? You do the battering machine, how does it work?
We have a professional ice cream maker, we have an ice cream machine, so it turns and cools it for us, and we mix the flavoring and we steam together.
It is really good.
The coffee, and the coffee ice cream is from both the Burnsville Coffee Roasters, the chocolate chips in our new chocolate swirl is from Frenchbrot Chocolate, pain river honeys and our honey lavender, so we source local.
Global sources. Wow.
What's your favorite part? The favorite thing you did there?
What did I forget? What's the first favorite thing?
The thing we do, I guess.
No, it's the whole thing.
No, out of all the programs.
You were just questioning.
We did a lot of stuff, and we did a lot of stuff, and I think that was my favorite, we did a lot of coffee, and we did a lot of practice, and there was a time to do that coffee.
Good. What's your favorite?
Um, I sort of liked doing all the baking, because we did a lot of baking, and also a lot of, you know, food, but it's been good.
Sounds good.
You don't have a good.
Yes.
You did, good.
I like all the new opportunities we've created, for many things that I wouldn't have been able to do before, and like other cafe, I mean, you get to do that.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I love the thing, Danny, I learned how to make apple cider, I was really, I never knew how to do that, and I would be doing it, but it's really fun, and yeah.
So the first of the little things.
Yeah.
Where did you hear about your school?
Um, I heard, I heard.
It was.
I, I heard a lot of stuff.
So you have friends that you've been with also?
Yes.
Oh, great. I'm a friend.
Seconds.
Really good, you're definitely good, y'all.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Grant.
Impressed with y'all, very impressed, very good.
Thank you.
Y'all come back anytime. That's good.
Hey, come back.
Well, I can tell you, it'll sell, that's for sure. All right, next is, is Ms. Christie here?
She's done, I'm gonna fill in her stand.
So next is item number seven on your agenda, is we'll be giving an EMS Medicaid, Medicare rates update from our county management, Lynn Austin.
So, two things that you should be able to make it tonight, so I'll fill in what you said here. In your packet, we have, every year, you know, they give us the new rates, where we're at versus miles, versus medical costs, medicine we give, all that kind of stuff. So you'll see the new rates for the ALS, which is Advanced Life Support, it's an increase of $11.94, this takes into account the average over where we live, counties around us, also our medicine, you know, like I said, that we use, wear and care on the vehicles, gas, fuel, that kind of thing. So it will increase, they're asking for us to increase it up to $490.43, like I said, that's an increase of $11.94. The ALS, Life Support Emergency Transport, the Advanced Life Support, is an increase of $18.19, that would be a total of $776.52. BLS is non-emergency transport, it's the basic life support, increase of $9.59, which is 408.71. And then there's the BLS, that basic life support, emergency transport, is an increase of $15.35, is what they're asking you guys to consider, and that would be a total of There's an Advanced Life Support Level Two, is an increase of $26.34, that's a total of $1,123.91. That would be considered the largest increase due to the amount of intervention performed at that level of a 911 call. We also offer a specialty care transport, there'd be no increase in this, a lot of this is transporting in between the different facilities for the hospital when they call us. We try not to do that at all, if we can help it by taking ambulances out of our county for emergency transport, but sometimes we have to, if there are orange color or a red color, we will transport. So no increase there. The rural mileage, the first seventeen miles, is an increase of $16.29, a total of $20.79 is what that would bring us to. Mileage over eighteen miles and thereon would be remade at the current rate of fourteen fifty per mile. It says EMS, EMS MC has recommended the implementation of the standby charge of the large scale out of town events. This is anything to do from the Solid Mountain Mitchell and White Mountain Transverse. The standby charge will not apply to the local community events, such as the craft fair, and they're proposing that the standby rates be $200 a hour for a staff paramedic ambulance, but see paramedic on board, and $100 an hour for sta, for a staff paramedic QRB, which is the quick response vehicles that we have. This just, these adjustments help the EMS service remains financially sustainable while continuing to provide the high quality of emergency care that we give. So, we've always tried to stay on base of that. It's a 2.4% with the Medicare Part B annuance speed schedule reflecting the increase, based on the consumer price increase index. So, that would be the increases that she would, was going to ask for tonight, and that's based on our EMS MC group, that does a lot of our billing and stuff for us, and we usually try to implement those as we go along, so.
Do you have more questions? Sir, is that on your standby?
Mm-hmm.
Will you do that, or is it a pulse and credit, or is it provided by the county?
No, they're additional credits, yeah. That's a credit that's not an emergency service, yeah. And a lot of times, that's for football games and that kind of thing, but that's not an increase to the football games, the local community games, but a lot of times, we'll use that for credit for that. And you know, we actually have a fifth credit that's available now, that we have just for stuff like this up here, we might have two of these for Sunday, internetics, or, I think that's on PRN that would want to work it, you know, so it's good for us, it's good for them, good for the community. And we recently just took a box off of one of the ambulances, and we have it set down there, so that we can say, we are going to put that flatbed on that and use that either for vacation parks or wreck, or we could use it on the maintenance, but we'd have to have more of a footpath for that. So we've not exactly nailed down, we're going to use that, but that's our first track that we are getting put back into use in the county's other programs. And then the last one, what gave us the fifth track, is we just kind of held on to one of our older ones, instead of taking the box off and stuff, you know, we purchased another used vehicle chassis, and that's good, and that kept us for many years, less than what it would take for us to pull the box off the old one, and it kept us a good number. We're, you know, our community's growing, the needs of the community, since the rain is more difficult to navigate, and so having an extra vehicle on itself. But I would ask for a motion that you approve those rates for the, for 2025 here.
Any other discussion? If anybody can hold there, you're, all right. We have a motion, do I hear a second? And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There you go, opposed carries, thank you for that. Um, next is item number eight, our Yancey County Financial Audit, going to be brought to us as usual, for Gull Killian, and. Thank you. Yes, sir, if you could, come on up. And I, I can't remember your name, so you'll have to tell us where it is.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. Does that count against us in the audit?
No. But that's the only thing you forget. Thank you. Um, well, it's good to be here. It's good to be here tonight, my name is Dan Molyneux with the firm. I need to go, I go, or?
I'm sorry.
Did I go, or?
No, yes, sir.
Okay.
Go to sleep.
So I know a lot of tragedies happened since last, this past fall, and a storm, and we're dealing with a lot of our counties, we do audits, even out towns and things, and with the, I guess a lot of, right now, the finance director's spending most of their time trying to get the funding from the sources, and all the humble reporting and things like that, but we have completed the audit this year for you. It's accounting, this is accounting numbers, this is, one of the things you have to realize when, when we, I'll go over some, some numbers, is there's three different things that's important to an audit. One is from funding sources, one is from government oversight locally, internally, management, and the other one is the LGC, North Carolina. And each of those three are, has their own things that are important to everybody. The taxpayer has something that's more important to them than the LGC. From your perspective, as a board, you want to make sure that you have sound policies, where you have the funds there to support if you need it in the future. You want to go to know where you're spending your money on your general fund, to know in your department, such as EMS, I know past couple of years, switching over from the hospital, doing your own thing, that's an endeavor itself. I mean, the, the cost of buying a truck now, it used to be a hundred and forty thousand, now it's what, two fifty? Yeah, a ton, a ton of money, so it's, you know, there's a lot of things to play there. So with this audit, it's as of June 30th of '24, it's a fiscal year, so that's what this presentation, a lot says, happened since June 30th. So that, that's why this makes it important, important to tell you, this is as of June 30th, last fiscal year. And we have given this sheet of paper, all that summary, financial statements, we issued a clean opinion, what they call unmodified opinions on the financial statements. There's different funds that you have, you have what they call major funds, and then other funds, and we have to give an opinion on all the major funds, and things as such like that, and we believe the financial statement information on these funds, together, individually, is, is entirely correct with, with your. If you were going to take, let's say, five years of your financial statements by the funds, you will see over the five years, Yancey County has, the number of funds has grown, okay? That's great and all, it provides more things for things happening, like capital projects and things, but it's also more of a headache, right? You have to track things, you have to spend more money. It, it, it's called growth, which some people like, some people don't, but you have to manage the different buckets. So I know years ago, when we first started doing this audit, the concern was really just the general fund, it was about, we need a big, bigger fund balance. Over the past so many years, that has not been the issue, now it's trying to run things more efficiently, things like that. So with this, we also, in the, in the audit, we, we have to review your internal controls in a way, we don't want to give an opinion on it, but we did not find any material weaknesses in your internal controls and your processes. You don't have fifteen hundred finance officers here running the show, right? You have a pretty limited number of people involved in the processes, which is good, in a way, it's, it's more cost effective, but we, we looked at people who, of what people But we, we looked at pro- people who, of what people do and who reviews what. And we don't believe there's any material weakness there where Randy could do, you know, something that somebody else wouldn't see. Um, with our audits, we also audit federal and state programs. And this is the part that I hate as an auditor. Um, I hate auditing federal and state programs. It's awful. Uh, but this year we audited six programs, three federal and two and three state programs. Um, with that, we did find a um, one, what we call material weakness over compliance with, with the federal SNAP program. And I'll explain that really quickly to you. Um, and what this is, SNAP is really food stamps program. And what it is, is called second party review. So when you have a caseworker that determines eligibility for a SNAP participant. Um, they do their procedures, they make sure they're eligible, the documentation goes forward and then that person's eligible. Um, with the federal government, it says directly, it says if you have a family of five or more people. Somebody has to review that file, which they, which, which um, the county does. But also, but it doesn't specifically say you have to select samples of those below the five. But one of the controls really required is for supervisory review of a random sample of those under five family. Under five members in the family. It's just a, a control in place that really needs to happen. Um, and based on what we, our selections, that was not being done. Um, I think that was just more of noting that it's not, it doesn't specifically say that. But it is really a control. There need to be some supervisory reviews to make sure those under five. People in the family has um their case, cases reviewed, to make sure that they're really eligible based on the support that they were provided. Um, another part to talking about what's important to the state, the LGC. When we do an audit, we do the audit, we have this financial statement, a free, forty, how many pages of this? This year for this county's, six um, seventy, seventy-seven pages. In the old days, you would give this to the state, they would pay somebody at the state to pull information off your data, right? Now they require us, which is a good thing, this is more efficient on their part, or a county. To put in key numbers into, into their database spreadsheets. And what it does is it's, it provides certain statistics that they look at, okay? And one of those um, there's pieces they really look at is if any fund has a deficit fund balance. Which means assets minus liabilities is negative. Um, if, if they look at the available fund balance in your general fund. They look the fact that any budget you create for any fund at the, at in, at the certain levels. If the fund had, is over expenditure, you have to tell them why or what you're gonna do to fix it in the future. And there's like eighty-five other different variables. This year, um, your available fund balance for the general fund has dropped based on the calculation from the, from the state. And what that is, is if you take your assets less your liabilities and your available fund balance is a number. That as a percentage of your expenditures, they want, if that gets below around twelve percent. They start harping on it. What hap- what's happening is when counties expand, you have different projects going on. The, the counties have to up, uh, front unload the projects, right? They don't want you to say, hey, we'll, we'll pay our share at the very end. They want you to kinda upload, front load the expenses, expenses. So that's basically the general fund. Let's say you have like your school pro- school capital project, you have grants that are gonna be coming in in the future years. At the beginning, a lot of times the expenses are paid, the county, the county has to put a certain portion to those expenses, expenses. The expenses come in, the county loans, kinda loans the money to that fund to pay for it until the project gets going. And it's a receivable from one fund to the other. Well, that receivable in this calculation with the state, a fund balance available is not, that's considered not fund balance available. So when you do that, it drops your percentage down. So that's an issue. And I'll show you a slide, uh, on one of the slides there, um, what that is. And then the other, there was some funds that had deficit fund balances and that's because. You're waiting for future funding from these grants that you're gonna be receiving the next year or two. So you, we, with accounting rules, you can't record a receivable unless it's your collectible to ninety days after year end. So that's one reason why these funds have fun, you know, fund balance deficits. Another thing that happens is, you know, it's timing of reimbursements too, um, from, from grant tours. Sometimes you think, oh, we're gonna get the money here. Well, it might not, it might take six months. So then you can't count it as being collected until the next fiscal year budget. Um, another piece that we found, we had this year was with, with your funds. It is expenditures over appropriations, meaning the budget lines and what you spent. And there's, there's, there's a lot of budget lines in your budget. We found in the general fund, there was um excess appropriations of your budget. Or some capital expense in the transportation, um, that was over budget. The tax reevaluation fund was over budget because some unexpected um expenditures that happened close to the end of the year. That weren't, didn't know until then. Um, and there's some other funds that are listed that were over budget. And that's, that's one front, that's one function of the finance director that's very difficult to manage month to month. Um, but it's, it's something that, you know, she's aware of it. It's gotta be worked on more to, to make sure. Okay, what is gonna come in? What, looking at your departments, what are the expenditures? That were might be going over budget. We need to get a, a budget of uh preparation change made before it really happens or close to when it happens. So, um, we'll share one thing. Let's see. Overall, if you look at your general fund from year to year, your added alarm taxes went up one percent as expected. You, you did not raise tax rates, you didn't have a rebound. So your, your growth was about one percent. Your local option sales tax went up one percent. Um, and your other funding sources, EMS, um, they dropped slightly from one year to the next. Um, I, I work on a board of a, a rescue squad and EMS is like its own little world there. Trying to maneuver with, with the funding there. Um, your expenses, um, from one year to the next, there's a graph about the breakdown of your expenses. Generally, your expenses went up, uh, through the general fund. It was because you did do a salary pay study, you know, the last couple of years. And it was really the, last year was the first year or the year that the increase really happened. And your, your wages pretty much went up about ten percent on average across all the south, off, across all the departments. And that was expected. Um, I think we all feel, looking at our other clients or governments um through here in the middle of the state. There's a lot of competition, you know, trying to get, keep employees. We happen to farm, trying to find employees all the time, but you have to kinda keep ahead. So it's easier to keep people or cheaper actually to keep people than to hire people, but it costs so, so much more to train them and such. Um, but generally, if we looked at our expense, expenses in your general fund from one year to the next, from twenty-three to twenty-four. The increase was there, it was in salaries. Everything else was, is kinda generally the same. I mean, I think we were expecting more increases because of inflation, but I think talking to some of the staff that worked on the audit. And then perhaps who's another partner that worked on the audit, you know, that it was kinda coming more clear that they're trying to keep. You're trying to keep your expenses in line, knowing, you know, your, your, your tax rate is gonna stay the same and things. Um, if you look at this one graph right here, it looks like this, right? And this is the one that might give anybody heartburn. It gives me heartburn if you, I look at them, what is that? Why is that? And I remind myself. So you can see right here, your fund balance. So fund balance, um, that fund balance is assets that let, less liabilities. Um, in twenty, two thousand twenty-three is a little over ten million dollars. This past year, it's at eight point four million dollars. And you can see this fund balance available. The twenty-three was six point nine million and then it dropped to two point seven million, okay? That would give me heartburn, but it's funny to do, right? Um, about three million dollars is not, you got it, three million dollars at two point seven, about five point seven million. Three million of that is actually fund, is receivables fund, the general fund to your other funds. For funds advanced, pay for all the different projects you have going on. So, and that's another critical reason why it takes time to get the paperwork, to get the state, to get the money to you, right? And it seems like a lot of the grants, they always end at the worst time, they're only at June thirtieth. They're definitely busy on June thirtieth, finance people. The state is eating worse. Um, I know there's grants out there that they try to fly in May, then it takes till, I think it was January of the next year. To get the money because of all the hoops you jump through to get the money. Um, so if you look at that, it did drop, right? But it's not, if you add the, the line right above the two point seven, the five point seven. You're, you're kinda, that, that's a lot that picture of what you stand, you're financially there. And then if you go to the next slide, to the next, the next page, the there. This is the fund balance available. And if, I know two thousand twenties on the far left, you go back to two thousand fifteen, fourteen, thirteen. That's when years that you guys were, I think, at legitimately not, we'll talk about this year. You were at seven percent, eight percent. And that's when you have the LGC was actually almost, it was turning up for. And over time, you have increased that fund balance available percentage of your expenditures. Meaning money to pay for your expenses for the next so many months. So eight percent represents one month of your expenditures, okay? So this year, two thousand twenty-two, it grew thirty-seven, thirty-six percent. A lot of that, some, some of that has to do with all the COVID funding that we've been getting. Um, and then it, what, twenty-three dropped twenty percent. And see how we dropped it to eight point five percent? But if you add the three million dollars that you're getting receivable from, it's actually from the state account. The LGC's wants to see eight and a half percent on this one. It's actually eighteen percent. You really think you had that back? So it's not, that's not a concern. But what we're trying to tell you is that's what the LGC's gonna see. You're gonna get a letter from the LGC and then you're gonna respond by explaining what that means and why. You know, why this eight, why it's not really, it is eight and a half percent we're aware of, but these are the reasons why. Because we're doing these projects and these things. So that, that should, and you should, as a board member. If you have, if you don't see that letter, you need to ask where is that letter? It's about sixty days from now. Um, so I don't wanna give you heartburn there, but that's, that's what that is. Um, so let's see. I think that's it really. I know it's all a, a big, huge mess of information here. To you. Um, the financial statements, I would, I really would encourage you to spend five minutes and just like actually read them. Um, if you don't have them, read them. Um, there's narrative there. Look at the general funds and just kinda look at it. And if you don't understand it, if you, if there's something that she doesn't know specifically uh on there. We can, we can kinda explain and give you resources. Um, but you know, it does give you, provide you the help of, of where you are and everything, so. Any questions? Anything for that? Alright. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I will say, let's, I, I will say one thing over, uh, that kinda, we were kinda expecting some of that. Due to a lot of the projects in forefront of the money, what you're saying. Cause a lot of our projects are reimbursement based. So just to break it down a little further is just because over your ends on June thirtieth, doesn't mean these grants end on June thirtieth. So sometimes in like on the EMS world, sometimes there's a thirty day lapse in billing insurance and that kind of thing. So uh, don't get too much heartburn on that because uh, we have a lot of projects going on. We've got the shares. That's right. We have, I mean, it's not that we're sitting here and nothing's old, nothing's happening. It's that we're waiting for that money to be reimbursed. This time next year may be the same budget outlook because um, we've got the hurricanes going on. We're printing a lot of that money, uh, all that money to accept what's expedited and getting it back on the back end. So um, there's a lapse there. The state doesn't see, the, the Fed doesn't see that we need that money back by June thirtieth. Um, but we'll try to get as much as possible back. It, it, it looks bad on paper, it looks good on paper, but the deal is things is happening, you know? Um, we have forefront and quite a bit of money for different projects, including some of the school projects and different things. That we have money outstanding, waiting on money to get back. So um, it's not that we're not aware of that and, and getting reimbursements every chance we, we can get one in. So just wanted to say that to clarify. A lot of good things happening. And just like Dan said with the growth, there are kinds of, a downfall in fund balance to say. Cause we're waiting on the reimbursement. There's a grant or something behind it. So we don't always get the money ahead of time.
I think that's where Dan's coming out that this is really aging.
Right. We're, we're waiting, we're waiting on funds.
And there's one fund, there's a fund financial of the couple of projects you have, this one by line. And you can really see, you're like, okay, here's expense, here's an expense, here's an expense. And you're like, where's the revenue? The revenue at the top says zero. And it'd be great to, to show the revenue and show a receivable even, you know, from the grant tours. But with the counting rules, you're not really allowed to do that. Um, unless you collect it within ninety days after year end. Um, so, and it is a game. I mean, the, the fund, the general fund. If you didn't have a general fund, and this is the other thing, if your general fund is not really somewhat solid. It's hard to get those grants because they know. They're like, wait a second, how do you know the fund? Cause they don't wanna pay you, right? Just every million dollars, they don't pay you a month. They make it four percent on, five percent on themselves at the state, so.
I just wanna clarify that a little further with all the, the projects going on.
Alright. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Um, right here would probably be a really good place to insert our, um, agenda amendment, to give an opportunity for this partner from a school board chairman, thank you for being here, sir. Uh, if you could come up right now, you've got something about this, this county school acquisition of real property, uh, addressed to that, so if you could fill us in just a little bit. Thank you, sir. I hope you got some of that, by the way.
Yeah, that's all right. We want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to come, share what we through, decide an opportunity for the county to, and for the county as well. Uh, for the last eight, almost nine years now, number one priority we have is students. I think that's why our charter gives, make sure we have safe environment, that life is good. This is the learning, an environment where people are comfortable built, right? And I think we've done a good job, uh, really, but, and that's been done because of the partnership between commissioners, the board, sheriff's department, everybody working together. Nobody could have planned a hurricane going on. We were planning expansions for the school, we planned to plug the market in probably two years. Move the kids around to other places to kind of have a safe environment, allowing them to play at that place, it's not exposed into anything harmful. When you get a choice, schools were closed almost immediately, and kids were moved to where they hadn't been moved, places that were never classrooms, that intended to be a classroom, became a classroom. As you go through South Tole and Burnsville and Blue Ridge, you'll see a lot of kids that have hacked into security, and they appreciate where they're at. You'll see teachers that are just working their tails off in a place that wasn't meant to be exactly that, Washington. Ever since I've been with, we, we closed Beal, Valkyrie, Fairmont, and Allyn. Our four W P S were closed. And the, 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 the saving grace for each of our students is small flash, and, uh, everybody agree that was, that's invisible. The more learning and a better environment for teachers, they ever work one on one shift. But at the moment, we don't have options. The places are full, the teachers, they're, they're just straight from, they're going to huddle and, but, as it came about, the project that you came up with, Project Gator, we learned one hundred and fifty jobs possible coming down to town. The only thing from our perspective, we see, we see possibility of multiple kids coming. Last year alone, we received eighty-eight new students in that county. Each week, we receive two.
Three last week.
Five in a row. Think we're still wanting to move in there, and that, that's just a circle, that's, that's what we're doing. We want to be as a board, as progressive funding, what you have there, as you purchased this property, and now we're looking at you to enter the coming this year. We feel like our charge is providing an opportunity for kids to have safe place and small environment behind them, just as you said, where we got kids in the county, positive, we see this. The property that we're looking at is at West Janty, the hundred and thirty-three acres. Before you, you have the cost of the property, you have the way that it's been paid for, the funding source. We've spoken extensively about our April option, there's no problem, rusted, it is, and there's no request from you to refund. And I'll come to the county, that's what we're funding. But at the same time, this property has potential for everyone, people in county now. We've got an opportunity on a hundred and thirty-three acres, there could be parks, there could be multiple people, I think, you, you'll see that as, as we go through it. But, uh, we come tonight asking you for your approval that we enter into a contract purchase agreement. And we've worked together for a few years on it, and a great relationship, we want to continue. We don't want to do this on our own. We want to do this with your blessing, with your approval. And any, any questions you have, we want you to ask. We, we may not be able to answer them, we'll get you, and I'm glad to sign your sharing with your first option.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us. Um, I, I'll admit, I'm surprised to be standing here before you. I really thought that we would have this discussion as we do in spring, and agile over for supper, and planning and talking and that kind of thing. And, um, the, the landowner asked that we expedite this process. So, uh, with that, um, checking with Donnie and Lynn, we'll talk to them on Friday, just to let them know that this conversation is, yes, continuing, and it's happening quickly. Um, I guess the reason why I, I'm passionate about it is, I see, uh, this is my sixth year here, and y'all did a really good job with Blue Ridge. You know, you really did. It's a beautiful school, the kids are happy, there's a whole bunch of them there, the teachers are happy. Um, we continue to hear good stats about the school system and things that our teachers are doing. Uh, found out just a couple of hours ago that our teachers are named, um, second in the state. There's two, there's one other district, but we have the highest effective teachers in the state of North Carolina. Um, and so, when you hear that, there's no doubt, we've got great principals, directors, our teachers are dynamic. And when you add in that, and your governments, uh, our board, things that we're trying to do for our kids, programs that we're adding in, uh, you're going to see that growth. As, and as you all bring in things, we see that growth. That's a good problem to have. Um, but also, I see this project not taking place anytime soon. I'll be honest with you. Um, I think that with our expansions and the buildings that we're doing, the additions, um, that, that we're doing at Blue Ridge and at Burnsville, uh, I think that that will hold us for a bit. But as you continue to look at economic possibilities and coming here, uh, there is no doubt in my mind that you're going to need one more elementary school next, probably six to ten years. Uh, we know that land is not, uh, available often. Uh, there's no secret to that. I see this as possibly being a multi-use, uh, whether it's, uh, an elementary school, law fields, workforce housing that we talked about. We very much want to keep, uh, teachers coming here. And, um, and so, I do think that there are many things that we can do with this piece of property. Uh, if for some reason that changes, uh, if that does not come to fruition, none of us have a crystal ball that we can look, you know? We never thought the hurricane would happen, we never thought COVID would happen. Uh, but as folks, uh, leave the cities, uh, they want to come back home, they want to come home to the mountains, and I understand that. And, uh, they're bringing with them children, grandchildren. And, uh, again, I just think it's a, a great opportunity for us. I would love to see this land stay in the house, in the hands of, uh, either county commission, or us, or someone that we have plans for in the future that would benefit, uh, you know, our community. And so, um, I did talk with our finance officer, she could not be here this, uh, evening, she is at a conference. Uh, she had a stroke when we started, you know, Kim, uh, she was, oh my goodness, you know? Uh, it was a surprise. Um, but we do have, uh, North Carolina lottery money that is given to us, and, uh, we use it on occasion for different projects along the way. It's state money, so we can't use it as a match. Uh, we can't use it for, uh, salaries for teachers that I know of. Um, and so, with that, uh, the purchase price of the, uh, piece of property is before you, the thirty-three acres, the amount of earnest money down would be ten thousand. Uh, we would use ten thousand that we have been saving for land for many years, uh, ten thousand for our capital account, and one point five then for our lottery funds. Uh, this will be entering into a forty-day contract, who would be responsible for, uh, working with engineers and our architect to go through and do some testing, uh, to make sure that, yes, this property is, uh, I forget, to go to the school, and soil samples and all those things. Uh, and then, again, I see this as a six to ten-year investment for multi-use. So, um, is there any other questions that you all might have?
So, basically, we're wanting to be prudent and taking advantage of this opportunity, with this property, it may not go to our hands any time. I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the thing, Dan, and flash line swap, what's going on there? Right, and you've got forty-five days to do your due diligence, to see if it's feasible or not, if you can, you got it, right? Um, and you're looking at a six to ten-year, uh, project basis, uh, as far as a school.
Right.
This stands out, or would be, I, I see here that you've got workforce housing, multi-use type thing. Within that six to ten years, I mean, before that six to ten years, you could do some workforce housing or something versus a school. Is that, is that worth the value?
Yes. Seeing that housing is, especially after the hurricane, has been such a concern. Um, and then we know that the average house price in Winston County is astounding, especially for beginning teacher, or, you know, boys. And so, um, I know that you all had talked about that too, and, and, uh, we have some great partners in throughout, uh, with grant monies that are available to look out for workforce housing. It's something that we have just put on hold simply because of, like you, we have so many projects that are going on, and so many things that we need to do first and complete first, um, before we take this next venture. But, um, here's this window of opportunity or time that I see, this, this why we're organizing this now.
We never planned for this effect last night. It just changed that we didn't have three times wide for our offer. Uh, now, that is other offering, I think this property, that, oh, absolutely. But the question of the staple one, like, the offer did you first, we go on, or that we can give you time, put on red, I have been finding for on red last Thursday. We have contracts, I can, I can, uh.
Can you hear it, ground property?
Well, if, if in a location, what was the growth of St. James County, we're seeing that, that's the fact point, and all of that's changed, anything that's changed. But we wanted time to think about it, we didn't get time. And that, that's just what happens, um, we all know, but every, we did the, 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 you have to run property acquisitions. Uh, if you look at it in the same form, looking at one of the papers, Blue Ridge, down with you, we've had about twenty-five thousand acres that got, uh, several years back. It's probably roughly twelve-nine per acre. A lot more acres, but there are a lot more options to do. And we have seen as an opportunity to disappear, future site, yeah, against them, as well as future site for problems, right? And there are a lot of things going on, and we have a lot of problems going on. Our next big deal in Winston County School will be the five-year grant, now, there is a study. And they were on that facility, it's very real high school, and we're doing that, to try to be ahead of them. That's the only way we got the last grant, we got all these five projects, we're doing now, and we're prepared, and that is the field that's been done, and come time to the grant opens, we're ahead of them. And that's what we're trying to look at now. I can foresee, it's just maybe one thing, but I can foresee us finishing that facility, but not in the period. And within a year, have a field study, figure out what we need, what's possible at that time. The vapor by into a head, from that border, whoever that told, no fault of the surface. People are trying, because the great problem to have, there is a great problem to have, people are willing to try.
Any, any discussion anymore for, for someone for, for? Mr. Walsh, is it feasible and viable legal, on this inside, if we could, we want to, uh, close session, have a number, yes, or third, fourth, fifth, and what, what do you need?
You can go into closed session for me to explain the procedure and the process and how the statute comes into play. Now, we could not discuss the process as a law, but I can explain you the legal part of what you would have to do, whether the statute comes on, how it plays out. And for this, for this, you're supposed to handle in closed session, that's purposeful. And once we get into closed session, I'll keep you on the rail with what you can discuss, and what you can't discuss. But we can make a vote on it. We can make a vote on it, and you want to discuss whether the amount that is all person is one that you agree with, you will have to make that, have that discussion, that vote in open session.
What's the question?
I say nothing.
Going to closed session, I don't have any options, no vote? I have on the table a motion to move forward, right or second? One second. A couple of motions in a second, all voters, please, say aye. All right? Motion, aye. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate y'all coming. Thank you for keeping me on, sir. All right? Appreciate y'all coming. All right? Next on the agenda, uh, we have board appointments for the North West Regional Housing Authority, item number nine. And I believe that, uh, Mr. Grunstad's the one that sits on that board.
Yes, I'm the one that sits on that board, and, well, me and Meg, and, excuse me, me and Morgan have been going back and forth with them. I'm not been giving any notification, we've been, uh, totally, uh, there's no, uh, mystery that, you know, Ms. Power, we had our issue with me as the mayor. Uh, so I'll give a case on the meeting, if not receiving, and Morgan has asked him, or asked the secretary there, to respond to her with four email addresses, and where they've sent that notification. And if you ask her that, Morgan has to see.
So, I've gathered from that that you want to.
Oh, I'll just stay on, yeah.
You want to stay on?
I'll stay on.
All right? Any other nominations? All right? We have, uh, Al Muhammad, David Grunstad, sit on this board, right or second? All right? All voters, please, say aye.
Aye.
Here's your vote, motion, aye. Thank you, Dave. Good luck with that. All right? Board appointments next, uh, item number ten is our, our T D A board. Um, any discussion, uh, we, the three that are on there, are there three appointments on this?
Yeah, there's three on there.
I know Jake was.
Yes, there's three one-year terms, one was Lee How.
Lee How.
Yeah, Jake was, and the third one was, yeah, Mealy. As far as I know, they, uh, you know, Mealy and Jake's talked about coming off the board, and then he said he was sad, uh, he just didn't want to be the chair, I think, the way it went, so.
So, he's currently, he's currently with the chair now?
As far as I know, all three was, wouldn't have any opposition with them, so.
And this was one year term on that?
They were just, uh, one years on that.
So, on.
Three appointments.
Yeah.
On the chair, uh, who, do they vote internally on the chair?
Yeah, Jake will vote on that.
They do.
Jake just, uh.
And Jake can express that to the board?
Yeah.
All right? So, here are the nominations, keep these three, what's the question or vote? We have a motion on the table that we continue this one-year stint for these three. All right? Motion in a second, all voters, please, say aye.
Aye.
Here's your vote, motion, aye. Thank you, Dave. All right? Next on our agenda, item number eleven, our county managers reporting this out. Looks like we've got a few things.
So, the first stuff we have are debris cleanup, and, uh, we're moving right along with that. I'll have Philip here in just a second come up, Philip, and give them a progress report for where we're at. Been a little bit of, uh, preliminary work here to do. We have, uh, been talking with Chip Patterson and, and Philip and, uh, Roger Dale, and they have been talking to me about a contract amendment. Uh, we've got a number one and a number two. Uh, and you know, they are, we gave them a notice to proceed on the state contract. The state made out that contract, uh, and I believe it is in twenty twenty, so it's been a while. And just to be honest, I don't think anybody's seen debris like this, and when they put up that contract. Matter of fact, I know they haven't, because, uh, the contract amendment, uh, is updated fee schedule is number one, which is, uh, much needed, I think, from twenty twenty till now. Uh, a lot of different charges have went up, higher fuel inflation, just period. Uh, this is just saying that we're aware of this con, we're aware of this amendment, uh, at the state level. We get reimbursed, we just give that notice to proceed, so we have to sign one, two, I double-checked that to see. The state on number one has approved it, that's time of the contract with E P S, um, and so. And so, I feel comfortable in signing one ahead, if you guys, I just want to make you aware of it, if you guys feel the pleasure of me signing that tomorrow, since we have the contract amendment number one with the state, go ahead and do that. And it was, here's a little update of the contract amendment. It says that FEMA has approved the updated fee schedule, the state of North Carolina and FEMA have approved the updated fee schedule for the state disaster debris removal contract. Here's the number of the contract. Updated fee schedule is provided after careful consideration of the unique disaster debris removal requirements in western North Carolina and the aggressive truck market conditions created by elevated prices in its surrounding states. The state and SDR is committed to continuing quality, professional debris removal and impacting communities, and to increase the pace of debris removal by implementing this fee schedule. So I know that that was one thing voiced over this period of time since the hurricane is, that the fee schedule needed to go up. So that's contract amendment number one, the state already approved. Contract amendment number two was approved today, Donnie had talked to me about that today, and I talked to SDR as well, and they'll have that signed tomorrow. We should have a copy in our hands, is what Roger Dale called me. And so I would just ask that, you know, when we get that signed approval from the state, since we are going off the state contract for debris removal, that as soon as we get that, that you guys would allow me to go ahead and sign that debris contract amendment number two, which was to removal of sand, silt, and soil. That's some things in the other parts of the country, and some demolition, that they haven't had to do, you know, in debris removal, that wasn't included in this contract. That is one thing that the Army Corps has been allowed to do, and I think the state's just catching up with what the Army Corps values are as far as the best, so you can do this and get reimbursed, and it's kind of trickling down, that's kind of the way I see it. Philip, I don't know if that's the way you guys see it, but it's not just all the woody debris. We've got a lot of rock and stuff.
So there's rock in there, I heard you say, sand, silt, and soil. Is rock included in that, because that's...
They have tried to get rock in there, it's just sand, silt, and dirt. I don't see rock in here, and I wish rock was in there, because we, I've never seen so much rock in my life.
Is that from all aspects, try to talk to you and everybody?
The narrative for this is, the, has, let's see, demolition removal of sand, silt, and soil, it's approved by the North Carolina EM, is tree material handler day rate and processing of woody vegetative debris, double ground to provide beneficial reuse for the product. The narrative is, it's, this contract has served, been a good contract that has served the North Carolina community as well for four years. The NC DPS solicitation established a contract structure where any eligible entity, activating entity, could activate the contract as their own contract, that's what we did. The contract structure has afforded the NC communities to get a rapid start on the disaster debris removal and to get a roadway to recovery. Since hurricane helene damage was unprecedented, Western North Carolina has identified additional needs in debris removal missions that were contemplated by the contract narrative or scope of work, but not addressed in the fee schedule. And these were pricing for demolition, sand, silt, dirt, tree handler, which I don't know, Chinaboggin maybe, vegetative debris processing, double grind, and for this beneficial reuse of product. Also demolition is in there, the contract identifies that the vendor shall provide disaster debris removal recovery services, including but not limited to the cleanup, demolition removal reduction, and disposal of debris resulting from a natural or man-made disaster. So it includes that.
Yes, if I can do you some background on that.
Yes, sir.
The first contract provision, I can say this contract was set out, I think, in 2020. And until this year, most of the debris removal occurred in eastern parts, those are those with glass, and that's what's going to happen down, so moving into mountains, the cost of removing this debris is substantial, substantially high, I think probably substantially high, probably contemplated in addition to the... And with that hard, hard time, asking if you can come in and do this work and lose money or not make an appropriate amount of money. So the state did a new contract, and first provision allows for debris in the property yard, if I'm wrong, I think that's what that is. But that's all that's done, and then we'll talk about that. The second one is, is to take care of the, basically what's happening down in Lake Hurley. Okay, so what happened in Lake Hurley, about all chimneys, and the bottom of Lake Hurley? And the question is, is with debris removal, does that include subsurface removal of the, so you've got things below the lay that you're going to have to go in and remove as part of the debris? And usually that comes under the work of dredging, and dredging was not something that's compensated by seeing, like, being able to recover for. So we've done a rule to sort of allow for debris removal in certain areas to be subsurface. They're working on a definition of that, I believe, I think right now the rule is maybe five, six pounds, you know, to be removed, but that's where that came, came, came about. We probably have some of that in Yance County now, I don't know how much, but to deal with the contract model, state can allow SDR to do that kind of work without, and get the coverage.
Sorry to say that you guys approved that, you know, for me to sign those to base the on the state.
Resolution one and resolution two.
Yeah, amendment one and amendment three. I think you can do that with one vote.
Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, do I hear a second? And a second, all those people say aye.
And we have Philip...
Any votes? I just didn't... Okay, all right.
We have Philip Jennings here with us, he's our Yance County fellow with SDR here, and he would, I asked him if he could just give us something on where we're staying on debris removal.
Thanks for talking, Phil.
Yeah.
This is the man I didn't see, he's going to doubt this, huh?
I don't know.
I saw he's from the Arkansas city. Couple of times.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, my name is John Jennings, I'm with SDR, I'm the Yance County proper manager, appreciate the opportunity to speak today, and bringing up to date on the three debris removal projects that we currently have underway and are getting ready to kick off. First is the rideaway debris removal, we start this project October the 27th. We are about ninety-five percent finished on first pass, eighty-five percent on second pass. We picked up just in excess of ninety thousand cubic yards. We think the rideaway total was around a hundred thousand, so we are a little over ninety percent on target, finish the rideaway project announcing last pass by the end of February first of March. We want to be completed with the rideaway by the middle of March, because we are moving to two other projects. First, the property debris removal, PPDR, that is currently being signed up as we speak. The third-party vendor, the county contractor, Debris Tech, is signing up property owners every Wednesday and every Saturday at the DRC in the Fred Shopping Center. To date, they have signed up over two hundred properties that have been completed, others that are in process, and they continue to see the walk-in traffic grow as board gets out, so that's encouraging. The third project that we are getting ready to start is the waterways project. We've gotten approval from FEMA for the first thirteen sites or reaches, as the Corps uses that term, starting at the headquarters of the South Kane, that will be working up from Murchison up to the McIntosh Bridge. We've got, we have fifteen sites identified that we felt met the criteria, thirteen were approved by the Corps. We've gotten the walkthrough completed, we're starting to get the right way, right entries, ROEs on those properties, and as soon as we get the first sites in place with the ROEs, we'll begin moving equipment into the water, getting debris out of the water, and moving it to its final disposal. The next area that will be presented to FEMA for approval is going to be the north side of Kane River from the McIntosh Bridge north, and then with the Tobe River will follow that, and we will continue to add waterways as funding gets available. Finally, the last thing I want to address is the water tank at the Michael Lou. There was no fuel stored in that tank, there is no fuel leaking, we have started that removal process. Bear with us, that's going to take time, that is a thirty thousand gallon water tank built in the forties, is approaching one inch thick, and extremely heavy, potentially dangerous. If that thing ever gets away from us, it won't stop brewing until it gets to Mitchell County. So we just have, want to make sure that we move in a very safe manner handling that kind of weight, but that, it was only used to store water, been working with the owner to get in there, get it out, and get it to its final disposable place. It will take a few days, but we are, that is a priority, we are moving through that. Go ahead, Jeff.
Are we going to have to demolition?
We're going to have to cut it, yeah.
Just set it to a point anyway?
Correct, yeah, it is extremely heavy. We have tried to give it away, we talked to different people, see if they could utilize it. Again, it was built in the forties, if you take a good look at it, it is not really dinned up considering what it went through, so it is very sturdy, but we have no choice, we have got to move it, so unfortunately we're going to start cutting and hauling it off in pieces. But that is underway. Any other questions that I can address? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
So you have talked to him back?
Was he, would he have been an angry individual, or...
Now, just a question, an individual. Swing and hit his body shot, that's all I'm like that.
Sure, okay, yeah, yeah.
You have.
Have.
And he witnessed that.
Whenever I get to those types of people, I like to hand that off to Baron Bryant. Let him...
Okay.
I don't like the, those kind of situations.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, and one more item on my list here, was the surplus property view, lot number seven, you guys have it in your packet for the Horseshoe Highland, one acre lot. We have an offer on that piece of property at a thousand dollars.
That's five or ten thousand?
Twenty thousand.
Might be a hundred thousand.
So, so, so.
A thousand.
A thousand.
No, it says a thousand and five hundred dollars. Was it certified check?
I would think if it's five hundred dollars certified check, there's a percent to make a five percent off of it.
Well, this online, of course, it's been wide out, but it looks like a thousand dollars. That's a ten thousand.
That's a ten thousand.
Is it? Morgan, let me check with her. She's, I'm doing that for her tonight.
Well, if it's...
Are you going to go, what do they say?
I'll go too, right now. Right now.
So if that, if that offer...
My neighbor's property, ten thousand, past period, a certified check, cash amount of five hundred dollars.
That's five percent. Which is required.
Let's, let's table this then until next month, because I've got here that they did on this sticky note, a thousand dollars with a five hundred dollar deposit, it joins this property for theirs. One of the property of Jack's Creek Community Attorney's fee, and the price of attorney's fee is thirty-seven fifty-three thirty-three, so thirty-seven hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. So I can double check that, that it's not ten thousand, but I've got a wide out thing here, and also on the sticky note that it's a thousand, so.
Well, is there a motion to table this, go here, second? Let's get some clarity on that, so if it's ten...
Okay. Azir, I can make a lot of difference.
Well, it depends on the destiny.
Yeah.
That's where it depends, all right.
So just a couple more quick updates, we're moving along pretty with our old bank building here on the square, been talking to the architect, they had a little changeover with the architect place with MHA, so we've been still working on that. We're looking at having a grand opening on our transit facility. April Wilson and myself worked with Monica today, trying to get something set up, because they are in, they got moved in last week or so, and very proud of that building, much needed, just in time for Hurricane Helene, the Charlotte gods and all that good stuff. So, but we're looking at October, or October, we're looking at February the 28th, at ten o'clock, so that's on a Friday, so if you guys will mark your calendars, we're going to have a ribbon hanging on that building. Sheriff's Office in the number one center is still moving along nicely, weather's played a little bit of a muddy role in that, but there's been not any holdups that we know of, so they're continuing on there. Ray Court Park, they are waiting on the folks to lay the block and the foundation there for that, they have the gravel all laid out and all that good stuff, so should, should start as soon as the weather kind of freezes and clears up for us, they're moving along faster. And then of course, Kid Mountain, that should be done in March, we're looking for that by the end of March, first to April, they've already got it demoed and moving along pretty nicely, if you've not been up there, go up there and move, it's pretty neat. We have turned in our damage inventory list with our FEMA folks and all that, getting that in with the state and into FEMA, trying to see what we can do around the project. So we'll start trying to work through and navigate through Kane River Park, what we're going to do there, what our options are, if we build it back this time, that'll be the fourth time. Not fully, it's always just been a partial through the soccer field and one of the baseball field ends there, but pretty bad, pretty bad hit there, and then of course at the campground. So we're going to have some decisions to make pretty soon on how we want to build back and go, but all that has been turned in, along with any damages to our county buildings, parks, any kind of damage to the insurance with our vehicles, we of course will turn those into insurance, what can be turned in, and then FEMA will pay like their, any kind of stuff that the insurance don't cover, so are deductible and that kind of thing, FEMA will start to reimburse us. There again, it's waiting on our money to get it on the backend, so still waiting on quite a bit, working with Palonaransy on a lot of that, with Nick from FEMA, and Nick Dodman, and also with Clay from the state. So moving along pretty good, and they're getting everything in, so we're not behind in any way there. I will say, thanks to SDR and Debris Tech, we got our waterway in, we got approval last Thursday or Friday on that, for the first section that he was talking about, from Earl Wilson Bridge down the Bowlet Bottom or so, down there, we got approval. So you'll start seeing things move, I think we're one of four counties, Donnie was here this morning, that has started that, and so we're one of those four. So moving along nicely, we're glad to be where we're at, and hopefully we got to get some good weather when we get all this cleaned up. And we were hearing that they're trying to push for another hundred and thirty-two days to have a lot of this cleaned up, Phillips or Robert was telling me today, they're trying to put the screen on to get, get things going and get it going quickly, so we'll see. A lot of debris, a lot of air debris is in the waterway, that's where a lot of air is laying, so just wanted you to know where we're at on far as our projects, our county buildings, and getting these parks and getting our land that's damaged from the storm cleaned up, so. Working toward it, working toward it.
Good. And we appreciate Greg and Baron being here tonight, thank y'all for all of your doing, it's a huge, huge undertaking, but we do appreciate it, and how you're doing and the time and matter, thank you for that. All right, next on our agenda...
the time and matter. Thank you, Greg. All right, next on our agenda is our county commissioner's report. Does any board members have anything discussed? Everybody good? All right. Getting set. Next on our agenda is our county attorney's report. Looks like you have something for us, Mr. Moss.
I have one time I'm claiming that the chair, the most resolution is in the package. It's a resolution that allows for an increase in part called micro purchasing. So before FEMA, most of their funding, things that we spend money on came from money from the state. And in order to spend those monies, we have to comply with procurement guidelines. And before now, most of their procurement was through the state guideline. Now that we're doing debris removal, construction, and other things, it's going to be using money from FEMA, and that requires that we use federal procurement guidelines. And on the federal procurement guidelines, when you spend money, procure goods or services, you have to follow what is called the most restrictive procurement guideline. And most of the time, the federal guidelines are more restrictive. You have one small section for purchases between ten thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars, essentially where the state guidelines are more restrictive. So what we're trying to do in this is that we're trying to, to adopt a purchasing policy that brings everything in the line with each other. So what, what you're doing here, this is something that allows you to bring everything in the line with each other, which then makes it easier for me and Randy, as they're procuring these services, to do something much faster than having to come to you every time they want to purchase something between ten and fifty thousand dollars. Generally, they've not done that. I mean, the state limit is always at ninety thousand dollars for this emergency. So what we're trying to do is make it much easier for us to, to use those purchasing guidelines. Every entity that I represent, every entity in western North Carolina, that is a municipality, a local community, or a union of local government, has adopted this kind of resolution to make it much easier. So it's kind of highly recommended that you, you did this. This is a pamphlet that actually was produced by the Corps of Health.
That's what's pretty rough.
And you're not going to be doing anything that you're not already doing.
Right, right.
Because we have been doing this under state guidelines for years.
All right. Any discussion about this?
It is, but that's to be reviewed annually if under the federal statute provided for review.
Got a motion to adopt, and a second, all those in favor say aye. If you're not opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Got it, Doc? That's easy. All right, next on the agenda is our public comments. Looks like we've got five speakers. And as always, we appreciate everybody being here. Be mindful of the time. You have three minutes. I'll indicate at the three-minute mark, we need, it's time to, to wind it up. And our very first speaker, Ms. Kathy Wosbell, that's Kathy Porcon. And she's speaking tonight about me. Go right ahead, ma'am.
I would start by thanking you all for the enforcement and the best for the community. They were really very helpful, and it reminded me of when, before the DOT started planning for the foreland, they had meetings to tell us where and what, who was going to be affected, just like the fire service does when there's a new management plan. And so I'm asking you to have a similar meeting about the library. There's so many rumors and misinformation and anxiety because you really don't know what you're planning. You need to know how you were funding the library over more than one year. What percentage of taxpayer dollars are you budgeting, and what does that amount? And now the regional library has different sources for state funds and grants. Will they be available to a county library? Are you buying books from the regional library and at what price? Will you keep the collection intact? If you're not buying the books, what funds will be provided to restock the library, and what qualified knowledgeable people will make those selections? What services and programs will you be able to keep or cut? Will you join Cardinal, the Libri恼 mobile, the children's library, digital library? What programs will still be available? Have you had applications for director, and I haven't seen any notices about staff? And where are you advertising other than the Nancy Journal? And who is interviewing? Anybody with library experience? Does county libraries have a board? Will it better reflect the demographics of the county and have people on it who actually use the library? And I think that that should already be happening now. At the Project Data Meeting, Jeff, you mentioned that you were elected to do what is best for the county, and in many ways, I think that you do. But I want to remind you too, that this election was a lot closer than the past election, and a lot of that was because people across affiliate affiliations are worried about you taking the library away from the regional system. So we'd like you to have a meeting with more than two days' notice, and at night, so people can plan, to tell us what your plans are for the library. Thank you.
Thank you, God. Appreciate it. All right, next on our public comment is Ms. Jackie M.A.A.S. Jackie M. Thanks for coming, Jackie. Appreciate you being here.
Be kind of the time. I just had bruises installed today, so I can't speak very fast. Just be aware. I had the opportunity to share a conversation with Jeff Whitson following the council's January meeting. He stated emphatically that the decision to withdraw Nancy County from the AMI regional library system had no connection with our LGBTQ neighbors, that the complaint about the Pride Month display was just the straw that broke the camel's back, but the plan to terminate the tenure contract was already under discussion. Now, that still sounds exactly like a description of a direct connection to me. Nevertheless, Jeff went on to say that he had gay members in his own family that he hugged on and loved, and offered this as proof that the council's actions were not in any way homophobic. My understanding then, and my position now, is that if nothing else, homophobia and this council's decision to leave AMI are inextricably confused in the public's perception as the only reason for this council's action. A handful of people, seemingly driven by prejudice, seem to believe they have won a major battle, and that gay people will what? Will they disappear from Nancy County? No. Will they vanish from the face of the earth? No. I just can't visualize what they hope to accomplish by pushing this council to eviscerate the library. Moreover, this widespread public perception has been reinforced repeatedly by the words and actions of members of the local and regional library boards that were appointed by this council. Some of these members have publicly expressed vile, hateful, and homophobic opinions, and have waved books around at public meetings that they claim prove the ridiculous notion that Nancy County folks are grooming or converting children to gay lifestyles. At the point of fact, I would like you to understand that is not how someone becomes gay. Jeff, this fooled me on the finer points of the constitutional guarantee of free speech, stating that he cannot prevent people from coming to this podium and spouting hate speech. I'm not sure about that, but at the very least, he could immediately replace any library board members who spout hate speech at public meetings. I know you have that power. Jeff suggested that I was being resistant to change. That's kind of funny. It may be the first time anyone has ever accused me of being conservative or reactionary. He asked that we all just give the county a chance to run the library and just see how it goes. That strikes me as a Faustian bargain. Once done, almost impossible to undo. So I ask everyone here to think. What if this freestanding, underfunded, county-managed library experiment fails? If it fails to meet the needs of all Nancy County citizens, how will we ever claw our way back to the excellent library services we are now privileged to enjoy? One more sentence. Faust only lost his soul. We stand to lose both the heart and the soul of our community. I have more to say, but my husband's going to say it for me. That rarely happens.
Thank you, Jackie. Three minutes and forty-three seconds, so I can watch the grace. So there you go. Mr. Basil M.A.A.S. She accuses me of butchering it, so I'm just going to say Basil's the important one.
It's really not hard.
Well, that's what I thought I said, but anyway. Thanks for coming, sir.
You're welcome. Hi, my name is Basil Moss, and I was drafted by my colleague, Jackie. I think she did. She couldn't get everything she wanted to say in three minutes. Faust. I'll pick up where she left off. The resources that would be necessary to create and operate a county-managed library of a quality comparable to the AMI system are desperately needed elsewhere, more than ever following the land. Families who lost everything deserve immediate help. Businesses that suffered damages and lost revenue certainly need help. I'm sure the budgets of public safety, human services, all the other services the county provides say they're probably stressed and never had to face a situation like this before. We should prioritize replacement of Kane River, the walking path, the dog path, all the ballfields, playground, campground, creeks, the rivers, the bridges, the roads. They're going to require massive, long-term, sustained and expensive efforts to enable them to return to the point where they can help sustain the recreational economy that this county enjoys. Some may think they lose face if they change direction once a decision's made, decision has been taken, even when circumstances on the ground have been drastically altered. They may quote some folk wisdom about not swapping horses in midstream. In this instance, however, changing horses might just be the one way to get to the other side. Please take a vote and vote to remain in the AMI regional library system. That would be a win-win-win for this council, for the library, and for the people of Nancy County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the public comments, Mr. Luke Dickinson, speaking to us about contractors and fires. Thanks for coming, Luke.
How you doing, Jeff? It won't be a dull one, I promise. It'll be quick. First things, I'd like to know what we're going to do. Everybody's going to know, you know, fires, it just happened recently. Do we have a plan? That's going to happen. It has. Pretty scary. Unless I caught, you caught a hangstom on this one. Next, an opportunity to speak to friends this weekend. I'm in the community pretty much. We have a need for a list of local contractors licensed. It's getting to be a massive mess, a big mess with things going on that should not be going on, such getting repaired by outside people. People are losing money. I do get calls. I've had to completely withdraw myself from this and focus on something else. But we do, we do have, there is a need for local guys that we can trust, people that are working here that our community can reach out to. It's, it's a big mess. The last thing is kind of a community message that brought my attention, a lot of people's attention now, are volunteer groups here that are getting people to sign for help, let's say. This involves mortgages, taxes, paying, keeping up their county taxes, and keeping their property taxes paid. I think we need to know more information on this without saying specific entities and who it is and what's going on. This needs to be a little bit more public, and we need to protect our people on this a bit. I don't want to see this be the land grab at all for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. And next on our public comments, Mr. Ben McIntosh, as usual, speaking in general.
All right, Mr. Phil. Maybe it's all I can do to keep nominating you for Northwest Regional Housing Authority Board. I often slow down to the security. Then, then we'll move it along with them. I thought thinking now, I would think just need to know someone who's passed from our presence this past month, and that is Wanda Gaywood. Wanda came to the clerk's office in nineteen eighty-four, totally that year, and she has been a fixture down there ever since. And she worked in the estate, special proceedings section there, and her advice was, was invaluable. And some of the things that I appreciate about Wanda, one of it is you didn't have to wonder where you stood with her. She would let you know. I think that was admirable. The other one is, in addition to her dedication down there, she was a champion for the underdog. She really was. Old, young, in-between. She put a lot of time in trying to secure services and situations and circumstances for people who really couldn't help themselves. I think she's being commended and certainly worthy of mention here at the county commission meeting in February. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. And she will be missed. All right, what's that last item? Mark, you want to come and vote? I've got a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second? All right. All right. Thank y'all for coming. We appreciate you being here. April Wilson.